The hour of seven o'clock having arrived, we're going to call the council to order. Let the rule reflect that all council members are present and a quorum has been established. Tonight, we have, to begin our meeting, a visit from our state representative, Representative Tony Jurgens. He asked to be recognized, and so I will bring Tony to the podium. Representative Jurgens, thank you for being here.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Could you hear me okay? I know that the...
That's probably more for the television than it is for...
Okay. All right. Very good. Well, I love what you've done with the plate.
There we go.
Mr. Mayor, I know that this isn't your last council meeting, but I did want to come here tonight and thank you for the service that you've provided to the citizens of Hastings, and to give you something that you will recognize as a House resolution. And if it's all right with you, I'd like to read that.
Well, thank you very much. Thank you.
This says, "A House Resolution Commending Mayor Paul Hicks for 28 Years of Service With the City of Hastings. Whereas those civic-minded individuals who work tirelessly in their communities perform an important service deserving of special legislative recognition, and whereas Mayor Paul Hicks is retiring from office after nearly three decades of committed service to the city of Hastings at the end of his current term as mayor of Hastings. And whereas Paul Hicks graduated from Hastings High School in 1978 and from Hamlin University in 1982 with a BA in political science. And whereas Mayor Hicks has a long history of public service and has volunteered with such organizations as the Hastings JC's, Urban Concerns Incorporated, SOAR, Hastings Alumni Association, and Hastings Access Television Corporation, and was recognized in 1997 as one of ten outstanding young Minnesotans by the Minnesota JC's. And whereas Mayor Hicks is employed by the Minnesota House of Representatives where he is a supervisor in the office of the chief clerk, acted as chairman of the Parks and Recreation Commission for six years, was elected as an at-large member to the Hastings City Council in 1990, and was re-elected for three additional terms, and was elected mayor of Hastings in 2006, and was re-elected for two additional terms in office. And whereas, upon his retirement, Mayor Hicks will be fortunate to spend more time with his daughter Danielle, and will continue to be an avid supporter of Gopher Sports. Now therefore be it resolved by the Committee on Rules and Legislative Administration of the House of Representatives of the State of Minnesota that it commends Mayor Paul Hicks for 28 years of service, extends appreciation for his contributions to the city of Hastings, and congratulates him on his retirement from office." And this is dated November 27, 2018, signed by Kurt Dought, Speaker of Minnesota House of Representatives, and Tony Jurgens, state representative.
You know, the speaker can keep a real good secret, because I just talked to him the other day. He didn't mention any of all the resolutions.
I do object to the word "young."
Thank you very much. It's an honor, and I appreciate it very much. Thank you, Tony. Okay, council, next we have a really great presentation coming up. I had the good fortune a couple of weeks ago to go to a meeting of the Hastings Environmental Protectors, and they talked about what a great relationship the city of Hastings has had with HEPT, otherwise known as. And we thought it would be a great opportunity for the Hastings Environmental Protectors to give a little bit of a program tonight about how important they are to our community and our relationship with the city. So we have Lain Crump tonight, who's going to give us a presentation about the organization. And Ms. Crump, welcome to be here. We're very glad to have you here.
Thank you for inviting me. We just had our annual meeting in November at the LaDuke, so Mayor Hicks was there. So this is a small version of our annual slideshow that I presented, highlighting some of our work this year and throughout the years in Hastings. Our mission statement is to preserve, protect, and restore Hastings area natural environments through research, study, and coordination with government, groups, and individuals. Some of the things that we've done in the community this year and in others, we every year coordinate an annual birding festival that coincides with Earth Day. This was our sixth annual one this year. We hold it out at Carpenter Nature Center. Something that is special about our birding festival is that this year we strive to make it more inclusive for people with limited mobility. And we also have a youth birding competition, which is not very common in other birding competitions throughout the state, and so brings in a lot of people from around the state and from western Wisconsin. We also have done for the last several years and continue to do water sampling at Lake Rebecca. This is organized through the Met Council. So we do water sampling and other measurements of the water quality, and then that's provided and maintained in a database through the Met Council that cities and counties and watershed management programs can access to help them make decisions about the lakes. We participate in the Parks and Trails cleanup every year. We also helped work on the Hastings Bike Tour this year for their first annual bike tour. We worked to ensure that it was a low-waste event by using compostable materials, having refill stations for water bottles that people would bring, and minimizing the amount of trash that we created and things that had to be sent to the landfill. We also had a booth out at Vermillion Falls Park where we provided refreshments for participants. We talked a little about the natural areas in Hastings that are desirable to attend, to go visit, and we had a little brochure that we created that kind of highlighted some of those areas for people from out of town, and we led a small little trip into the old limestone quarry that's over there. We participated in Rivertown Days by volunteering, doing some trash pickup on Saturday and Sunday. One of our main goals was to partner the trash receptacle and the recycling receptacle so that people could easily find the right place to put their trash. And we also kind of went through the trash and sorted out the recyclable materials from that and cleaned out the recyclable receptacles to make sure that it wasn't a polluted, a waste stream, so that the recyclables were all clean. And some of our volunteers. Some of our members helped with Mr. Beatty's high school canoe trip down the Vermillion. They led and taught some basic canoeing skills and also gave their information and wealth of knowledge about the ecosystem and the environment around that area on the Vermillion River. We've also partnered with the city and friends of the Mississippi River to plant several pollinator patches throughout the city. We have at least six, one at Gerton Park, one at Carey Park, one of the 19th Street Ponding Basin, Resurrection Methodist has one. There's one at Old Mill Park that was planted by FMR and the city, and we work to upkeep those and also use them as areas that we can educate the public about the importance of native plants and pollinators and creating an ecosystem that supports those. We also give out a Tekla Karpen Award. Tekla Karpen was a founding member of HEPT and an important member of Hastings. She passed away recently, but we created an award to honor her that we don't hand out annually, but every few years when we find a really deserving resident. We have, in the past, honored Tom Lewansky and Phil Veeth, and then this year we honored Tom Bell with the Tekla Karpen Award. The recipients, we plant a tree in their honor. We've planted two trees down at Levy Park, and we've planted a disease-resistant variety of American elm called the Valley Forge for them. And these are some of the people that we partner with in our work. All right? Thank you.
Outstanding. Lain, that's a great presentation. But council, is there any questions or comments you'd like to make? Councilmember Foltz?
Thank you, Your Honor. This was exciting. Really, I've tried to reach out to the group in the past, and so I would love to come to one of your meetings.
That'd be fantastic.
Do you meet regularly still, every month or every month?
Yes. We do. We have our next meeting December 13, which is a planning meeting. We will update our Facebook page with that information as well so that people can find us. And we have a new brochure that we plan on sending out to try to increase some knowledge about our organization throughout the community.
And it's over on Facebook. What do we search for then?
We recently changed our name to Hastings Environmental Protectors, so you should be able to search for that and find us.
Great. Thank you.
Yeah.
Councilmember Liefeld?
Thank you. You know, I've lived in Hastings for just over 50 years, and for the first time this past summer, so I went on the bike tour with the Parks Department and stopped at your little corner spot there, and they took me back to the limestone quarry that you were just talking about. I had no idea that was back there. It is absolutely gorgeous. And since then, I've taken probably six other people to show them where it is, because I'm like, you have no idea this is back here.
I didn't know it was back there.
It's the coolest thing I've ever seen.
It's such a cool spot.
Yeah. So that was one of those, I mean, I thought I knew most things about Hastings, and I bike a lot and walk a lot, but that was the neatest thing I've ever seen.
Yeah.
So thanks to you guys, I got to see that.
I'm glad we could introduce you to that.
Thank you.
One of the first things that happened when I was elected mayor is I thought, oh, isn't that nice? Tekla Karpen asked me to come to her house, and everybody would know this, to have tea. And if you know Tekla, you gotta have tea. Well, you know, I didn't really know her. I'd heard the name, so I said, well, isn't that nice? I'm gonna go to her house and have a little tea. I was there for three hours and was given a lot of information about how we can protect the environment here in Hastings. So it was the best lobbying effort ever.
[laughing]
But she was such a special lady, and the award is named after her, and she was one of the original founders of HEPT.
Yeah.
And so we owe her a lot, too. And it's great that she's still recognized within the organization today.
Mm-hmm.
Okay? Well, thank you very much, Lain. We really appreciate your presentation, and anyone who's interested in joining HEPT, please get ahold of them on their website.
Yeah. I have a few brochures I might need to...
There's some brochures here as well.
Make sure. Thank you.
Okay, council, we have before us the minutes of the regular city council meeting on November 19, and the workshops of October 22 and November 19. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes of those meetings? Seeing none, they stand approved. Any council items to be considered? Any council items to be... Councilmember Foltz?
Your Honor, could I just add to the agenda an update for where we are with the water analysis? If it wouldn't mind staying for that, I would appreciate it.
Okay. An update on the water analysis?
Yeah.
Okay. Let's put that under Administration Number Three. Okay? Okay? Any other comments under that heading, councilmembers? If not, we'll go to the consent agenda. What's your wish? Councilmember Balsantik makes the motion to approve, so I'd like my councilmember Foltz. That motion is now before the body. Is there discussion to that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor of that motion say aye. Aye. Those opposed, nay. The motion prevails. Next, we'll go to a warning of contracts of public hearing. Tonight, we have the truth in taxation hearing for the 2019 budget. Molly Lamers is here, our finance director, and she's going to take us through that presentation. Glad to have you here.
Thank you. I'm glad to be here. Your Honor and councilmembers, it is my honor tonight to present the 2019 proposed budget and hold the truth in taxation hearing. Tonight, you won't be asked to take any action on the budget. That will occur at your December 17 meeting. With that, let's move to the proposed budget. The budget is intended to be a fiscal plan that prioritizes our services. We have two funding sources that make up our budget. The first one are enterprise funds, and they're intended to be self-supporting. They apply generally to our utility operations. The second are our governmental funds and include our operational and project budgets and are primarily funded through property taxes. Governmental funds are the primary source for our police, fire, and EMS and Parks and Recreation operations. We have a number of meetings throughout the year with the full council, the finance committee, and city staff. I would like to recognize our finance committee for the significant amount of time spent on reviewing budget information and providing direction. Additionally, our staff has done an excellent job in creating a budget that meets the criteria set by council. The 2019 budget book is finalized, and on our website, electronic copies will be distributed this week. We also have updated our capital improvement plan and capital equipment plan for 2019 through 2023, and detailed capital books will be placed on our website and distributed digitally before the end of the year. Since 2014, the city has experienced an increase in tax capacity. For 2019, the tax capacity is projected to increase approximately 8.21 percent. That thick blue line shows our local tax capacity going up, the gray line is our levy, and the yellow line is our tax rate going down. The 2019 preliminary levy is proposed at $14,233,201. This next slide talks about our tax rate and debt levy. The city's tax rate has went down from 66.25 percent in 2014 to projected 59.55 percent in 2019. Additionally, the debt levy, you can see, has fluctuated a little bit, but it's averaged about 3.1 million over the last six years. So for the 2019 budget, we are projecting $710,028 in LGA. Some of the items in that budget include community programming at Levy Park and Rotary Pavilion. Three of our part-time employees are going to full-time status. We have a larger 2019 street project. We're continuing our water meter replacement program. There are several economic development initiatives, and many equipment replacements and facility repairs to take care of what we currently have. If you strip away those capital costs and take a look at our operations, you can see that public safety is the bulk of our expenses, followed by public works. This slide shows a small piece of our 2019 budget at a glance. This is a, it shows our levy costs broken out by month, an area that it's spent throughout the city. It's got all of our capital and operational expenses. This is a brochure that's also on our website, and it's available to the public. We did kind of a revision this year, so there's a lot of fun new facts. Everybody should check that out. This slide again shows our property tax impact. The city's median home value for 2019 is about $218,300, and that home would pay an estimated $1,195 in city property taxes annually. If that home didn't change in value over the last four years, this shows you what their taxes would do. So this is in line with our decreasing rates. As we all know, the variance there is the market value. That's what's going to determine with the tax rate whether the taxes go up or down. This slide talks about our, shows our commercial properties. Property taxes for commercial are impacted by a variety of factors, including valuation, fiscal disparities, and tax classification. We can't compare these the same as we do a residential house because of all the variables that go into it and the complexity of the calculation. But what we've done is we've taken three different businesses in town and taken a look at what their tax is going to do with our rate. So we've got, the tall one is our industrial, which is over a million-dollar business, and you can see it goes down just ever so slightly with the proposed 2019 levy. The middle bar is our commercial. That business is valued at $741,500. It's also going down slightly. And the smaller one is our commercial preferred, which is about a $278,000 building. On that one, it shows up slightly, but ultimately, you can see there's not a lot of change. It's very minimal to all three of the business classes, which is a good thing. So again, we have that budget at a glance pamphlet. It is just a snapshot of 2019 budget on the website. Also available is all of the budget presentations we've had this year and the 2019 final budget book. You can find those, if you go to our website under City Government tab and just select City Budget, there'll be a big tab with all kinds of links you can click on, and all that information is located there. At your next meeting, the council will be asked to set the 2019 tax levies and approve the 2019 budget and capital plans. Thank you.
Thank you, Molly, for that presentation. I'm going to open up the public hearing. Is there anyone here who would like to speak to this issue on the truth taxation hearing, dealing with the city budget and tax rate? Anyone here who would like to speak to that particular issue? Okay. Seeing none, I will pause the public hearing, and council will be coming back to this item at our December 17 meeting. Okay? Next, we'll go to public works, under reports from city staff. We have a resolution before the city council to, in regards to the Highway 316 recommendation, design, scope, and improvements, and our fine city engineer, all right? Please take over.
Thank you, Mayor and city council. Yeah, I'm here just to give a brief introduction to the item. Resolution of support tonight is up for, in your packets for consideration. That includes Highway 316 within the city of Hastings. Staff has worked over the past year on, as teaming with MINDOT on listening to the concerns of this corridor, and then coming back and vetting through a public outreach process to try to put together a recommended solution. So that combined with several city workshops, I'm here tonight to introduce Molly Klein, the South Area Engineer for MINDOT, to give you a little more in-depth look at the project.
Thanks, Ryan. Thanks for having us here tonight. Again, my name is Molly Klein, and I am a South Area Engineer with MINDOT, here to share more information about the upcoming Highway 316 project. In 2017, MINDOT identified a pavement preservation project that was needed on Highway 316 from the north junction of 61 and 316 to the south junction of 61 and 316. In talking with city of Hastings staff, we were keyed in that there may be some additional needs in the city of Hastings, which is shown in the green area, the evaluation area, extends from the north junction of 61 and 316 to just south of Tuttle Drive. We kicked off our efforts with a open house to the public in January of 2018, and this is what we heard from that open house. We heard that access is a concern on Highway 316. We heard that there are safety concerns on 316. There is a lack of pedestrian and bicycle connectivity adjacent to Highway 316, and speed is also a concern in this area. The fifth one on there is an intersection at, or concerns with the intersection at 61 and Highway 316, and while we're not addressing that with this project here today, we will be looking at that in the future with an upcoming project. We took this information back as a project team and went back to the public then with some concepts in September and October of 2018. We shared a number of concepts with the public. They weighed in on their likes and dislikes, and we are here tonight to share with you the preferred concept. The concept that you see before you is this preferred concept. It includes a compact or a mini roundabout at Spiral Boulevard. It includes a second mini roundabout at Tiffany Drive and a third mini roundabout at Tuttle. So the goal of this evaluation and this concept before you is really to address those four concerns that I mentioned previously. It would also include a bike and ped trail on each side of Highway 316. It would include narrower driving lanes, a center median, and those three mini roundabouts that I mentioned before. The benefit of this concept over the alternative concepts that we evaluated are really, it has the potential to reduce the speed the most. With these mini roundabouts, you are forced to drive slower through those, which will help with the speed concern. Those mini roundabouts also provide a gap in traffic, so if you're accessing 316, whether you're taking a left off of the highway or a left on to the highway, you will have more room to do those left turn maneuvers. It provides safety benefits for pedestrians, given that they are on separated pedestrian facilities that are available for both bicyclists and pedestrians, and it provides a median. That median really will help with the pedestrian crossing. It provides a refuge, so a pedestrian or a bicyclist would only need to cross one direction of traffic at a time. They would then have that refuge where they can wait for the other direction of traffic before making that full move. The project budget, so the MINDOT project budget for this project as a whole, so from the north junction to the south junction of 316 and 61, is $9.2 million. Of that $9.2 million, $2.4 million are dedicated in that green evaluation area, which is in the city of Hastings, so from Tuttle to the north junction. The project that you saw before you, or the slide before this, isn't covered 100% by this dollar amount, so we would look to partner with the city of Hastings to look for additional funds to move that concept forward. This graphic here shows kind of where we've been and where we need to go. So again, in February, we had our first open house. We took that information back and came back to the public with a second open house in August, September, then we met with businesses in October and November, and here we are tonight at this council meeting, and the request tonight is to get direction from the city. There is a resolution of support that we will need to move forward with this project, and I believe it is in your packets tonight. It is not a funding request. There is no dollars associated with this resolution of support. It really just gives MINDOT direction that the city is on board, and this is a concept that can be supported by the city as well. So with that, I'd open it up for any questions, if you have any.
Thank you, Molly, for your presentation, council. We'll bring it here. Councilmember Vaughn?
Thank you, Your Honor. Molly, I forgot to ask this question at our workshop. You had showed us a slide downstairs where you were proposing to light the roundabouts. Is the rest of, the slides I didn't see, is the rest of the corridor lit?
That will have to be figured out. We don't have that nailed down at the moment. It will come as final design comes along. Pedestrian scale lighting is typically a local cost, where roadway lighting would be a MINDOT cost, so it depends what the need is as we move forward into design, so.
So that's part of design, right?
Yes. Yep.
Further discussion? Is there further discussion? Councilmember Brodsky?
I just have a question about the access piece. I know that you said as part of the proposal that there's a median proposed.
Yes.
And I think that as a resident, if I live along the highway, I might think to myself, shutting off some access so that there's better access might be a little counterintuitive. Can you just explain what the logic is for doing that so that we can understand how that meets that priority?
Absolutely. Thank you. So the removal of the left-out access improves safety, so it reduces the potential for a left turn or a right angle crash, which are typically the most severe, and those are the T-bone accidents. So we would reduce those risks for crashes, so improving safety. We would slow traffic down, and then those vehicles, where they're typically waiting now to make a left, they would be able to take a right, go up to the next U-turn or that mini roundabout location and make a left. So with the concept as a whole, the intent is to slow traffic down, so it will be essentially faster to make those left turns. You won't have to wait as long to make a left. If you can make a right, then you have the right of way in the mini roundabout to make your essentially left turn or the U-turn move. Thank you. Yeah.
Is there further discussion? Councilmember Foltz?
Thank you, Your Honor. Molly, I would like to thank you and the other engineers at MINDOT for really doing such an excellent job. And I also want to thank Nick and Ryan, our, Nick Egger, who is our public works director, who you probably can't see off of the television right now, and Ryan is our city engineer who did the introduction, because I am so impressed with just the amount of input that you've asked for. In like every question we have, you investigate it, and you really do wonderful analysis, and you come back with wonderful recommendations. I've just been so really impressed. And I realize that change is hard, and it was residents that had brought forward to us as council members, you know, their great concern, and I know that perhaps not everybody's going to be, you know, happy with being able to only take, you know, a right turn, you know, out of their driveways that currently are on 316, but I have to say, it's going to be such a tremendous improvement, just the little bit of door knocking, you know, that we do. I've, you know, gone up and down 316 a few times now, and it is really frightening to get close to the road. And so this is so welcome. I'm so glad to see that you have trails at this point, at least on both sides of the roadway, to increase safety. So really, I just wanted to express my great gratitude, and I really think you guys are hitting this out of the ballpark, so thank you. Thank you, Your Honor.
Councilmember Balsantik?
Yes, thank you, Your Honor. For the public's sake, we do need to emphasize that we are just approving the design concept and not the funding. At the workshop earlier this evening, we did talk about the fact that the way this is set up right now, in terms of what the design concept is, it could be anywhere from $1.4 million to $2.6 million. from 1.4 million to $2.6 million short of what the projection cost, uh, uh, would be, what, what MINDOT has in their coffers versus what the cost of this is going to be. Therefore, uh, we do need to let the public know that it, it's not a case of, is the glass half-empty or half-full? I always like to think that, that the concept of the fact that we can fill up the glass. So, what we need to do is fill up the glass with a number of, uh, uh, proposals, uh, that we can put forward, either through grants, through the legislature, uh, through another, uh, a myriad number of, of, uh, options, uh, between now and, now and then. If, if we were not to, to get outside funding, the city might be obligated, if we were to approve the final design, we might be obligated to spend close to 50% of what the project would cost, which I don't think anybody really wants to do. So, uh, it's going to be a case of our staff, uh, a case of our legislators, uh, and a case of our council members being apolitical, uh, in, uh, trying to, uh, let the powers that be know that this is something that needs to happen. Now, one thing that does create a lot of sympathy for a project like this is the safety factor. And what we've been seeing since we had the initial meetings with MINDOT and the neighborhood, uh, is that safety is a major concern, uh, with a project like this. And so, uh, maybe we can get the glasses filled up based on that fact. Uh, uh, the powers that be that are above and beyond us always do tend to look more favorably at a project if it is a case of something that involves a safety factor, accidents, pedestrians, bicyclists, uh, all of those different kinds of things. The insurance industry kind of gets involved in this too, in terms of pressuring, uh, not only MINDOT, but sometimes your, your local government agencies to do something, uh, about what's, you know, what is out there. Much the same way that, uh, uh, the DNR gets pressured by the ins- insurance agency to increase the, uh, uh, the ability of hunters to take more deers so that we don't have as many deer accidents. It's kind of the same thing with MINDOT in terms of not so much deer accidents, but traffic accidents. And what we can do to make things safer and more economical, uh, for people, uh, in the long run. So, approval of this tonight, if we do so, is for the design concept. Uh, the final design, which will, uh, come before the council in the winter of 2020, uh, will hopefully show that the whole concept, the final designs are fully fr- fu- fully funded. But we've got a lot of work to do, uh, between now and then to see what we can do to get the full funding involved in this project, so that construction can start on something that is safer, more economical, uh, for the benefit of all Hastings residents and people who are passing through our community, uh, as of 2021. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you. Is there, uh, further discussion? If not, I'll seek a motion. Councilmember Vaughn makes that motion approved, seconded by Councilmember Foltz. That motion is now before the body. Any additional discussion of that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor of that motion say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed nay. The motion prevails. Uh, next, we have a resolution for the city council. Thank you, Molly. Modifying parking restrictions in a portion of West First Street. And, uh, I'll ask our Public Works Director, Nick Egger. Welcome to the meeting, Nick. Glad to have you here.
Thank you. Sorry to be hiding in the corner there earlier. Uh, yes, as the mayor said before you, there's a resolution to consider some modifications of parking restrictions on the portion of First Street West. This is over near the Regina Hospital and Senior Living Complex, uh, near Frazier and Farm Streets is where we're talking about. Earlier in the year, staff and Hastings Police had received some complaints of, uh, parked cars on a portion of Olive Street near the intersection with First Street. Uh, the resident had cited some frustrations they were having with being able to see out onto the street when they were exiting their driveway, and commented that their mail, uh, delivery had been obstructed on a couple of occasions because the, the mail delivery truck couldn't get to their box. We saw this as, uh, something that we may want to consider implementing some further restrictions on Olive Street. Currently, there isn't any sort of restrictions there, but there are on portions of Frazier and, and Farm Streets, um, to kind of combat that sort of issue from historic parking practices that have been in the area. But met with the Operations Committee, I think it was in late September, and discussed the issue there. And out of that discussion, the committee generated the thought that there's, uh, looks to be some room on a portion of First Street where maybe we can open up some space for those handful of cars that have been parking on Olive Street to maybe park there instead. It was seen as a, uh, convenient compromise there. It's, it's close to the facilities where the, uh, the, uh, cars were dest- the drivers of the cars were destined to go. I didn't mention it, it's, uh, employees of the complex there. And approximately the same distance away as they had walking from Olive Street. So, we came up with the idea that you see on the screen there, where there's a section between the westerly driveway to their Senior Living Complex and the back driveway that goes into the hospital there, uh, is a good amount of room for this sort of thing to accommodate, about nine, 10 cars, uh, for that. Uh, First Street is plenty wide in order to fit this sort of thing along it. It's, uh, I believe it's 36 feet wide in that area. And as you see, there are some parking restrictions on the south side. Those are applicable only during the, the weekdays, uh, from 7:00 AM to 4:00 PMs. So, uh, that's what we have for your consideration. So, I'll turn it back to you, Mayor Hicks, and we'll stand for questions.
Thank you for that, uh, presentation, Nick. Council, this issue is before us. What's your wish? Councilmember Brox.
I just have a question. Do we know what's driving the parking behavior of the car? Because I, I, I see what we're trying to do here. We're trying to provide another option, um, but if we don't have a handle on the parking behavior, why people are parking here, I guess I want to make sure we're solving the right problem.
We, we understand it to be that, uh, there, there was some capacity issues with the lot at the Senior Living Complex, and this was some spillover traffic that was happening in the neighborhood there. And rather than have the employees park in one of the larger lots further to the west where it's a long walk into the senior center, they were parking there instead, out of convenience.
So, have we, and I know it says that we've addressed it with Regina, that, that we would prefer their employees to park on site. So, do they have any plans to, you know, expand their parking where it's at or to solve, because really, this, this is their, kind of, their issue?
Yeah, in the immediate vicinity of the Senior Living Center, it doesn't appear that they have space to expand the parking lot. Uh, there's certainly a lot of room as you go further to the west and where the clinic used to be, but, uh, I think, again, it came down to the, the employees that needed, the stalls were working on that eastern end of the complex, and so parking all the way over towards the west wasn't going to be a convenient option for them.
I appreciate your empathy, because I work at a very large employer in Eagan, and it's a 15-minute walk from everybody's car into the building. So, I have some empathy, but I also think we have to provide for some safety, and I assume we're going to monitor the solution that we're putting in place and decide if it's working or not, or if we need to take additional steps.
Yep, absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Further discussion? Councilmember Foltz.
Thank you, Your Honor. Nick, kind of changing the subject, but not fully. I just recently had another resident contact me in kind of a similar situation, who lives on Eddie Street, you know, kind of on the corner of Eddie and Third Street, where there's that new health and wellness center. And we know from the analysis that, um, was recently done last year, that there's some, um, that parking lot, um, back there has a lot of, uh, traffic sometimes. And so, he was telling me that there are problems with folks parking on the street, and so it's very similar. So, I was wondering what kind of channel, um, is the, wha- wha- what would you advise is the method for us to go about, um, in these kinds of circumstances where residents are, are concerned about, um, parking on the street, um, and blocking, you know, access to their homes and, and such, and making it difficult for them to park? Um, what, what's the proper channel for us to go through in that?
Well, uh, council member, I think they can contact, feel free to contact either Public Works or Hastings Police. If, if the police take a look at it and they find that there's some violation of ordinances or state law on parking in too close a proximity to a place they're not supposed to be, then obviously there will be a citation issued, and that is a way of trying to help correct the behavior. Uh, if it's, uh, not that, then Public Works can take a look at the, the context of the area and what might be available nearby, whether we need to consider some sort of restrictions, uh, posted in that area. That's what we had done, actually, in that very instance that you described, uh, the Operations Committee met about that. And the first step that we decided to take was engage with sta- use staff to engage with the, uh, the business nearby where the parking was being generated from, and asked them if they could change their patterns a little bit. And they did talk with their employees about changing that, and I understand that that's still a little bit in flux. So, that's a perfect example of where we've got to check back and see if it's actually working as we, um, agreed to with the, the business in the area that was, uh, producing the concern.
Okay. I'll follow you up with, follow up with you with the details in an email, in a Clubby Joe. Um, and so, anyhow, sorry. I was just curious.
No, no problem.
And just to let the, you know, the public know what is the proper process to go through, so. Thanks.
Okay, uh, as to the resolution on First Street, seeking a motion. Councilmember Liefeld makes that motion to approve, seconded by Councilmember Balsanik. That motion is now before the body. Is there further discussion to the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor of that motion say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed nay. The motion prevails. Uh, item number 3 on the community development has been withdrawn by the applicant. We'll go on to administration. We have, uh, in, uh, a memo before us with the Relief Association Pension Increase. Julie.
Thank you, Mayor, and Council. Um, the Hastings Fire Relief Association is requesting city council action to approve a pension increase of $300 per year of service. So, the pension would go from $6,100 per year to $6,400 per year after the vesting period. Um, city council held a workshop on November 19th to learn more about how the Fire Relief Association and the city work together. Current Fire Relief Association fund balances support the fund level increase, but we always, um, keep in mind that once we raise the benefit level, um, we cannot decrease it, even if a city contribution would be required. So, I can stand for any questions, and, um, Al Starley and Craig Latch, members of the Hastings Fire Relief Association Board are also here.
Okay, thank you, and thank you, gentlemen, for being here this evening. Uh, council, what's, uh, what's your wish on this particular issue? Councilmember Foltz.
Um, Your Honor, could I just mention one issue? I thought it was very, very informative, the workshop that we had on this, what was it, two weeks ago now? And so, I was very thankful for that. And, but one issue I, that kind of caught my attention was that this recommendation, uh, was actually made by the Fire Rel- Fire Relief Association several months ago, and so it's just kind of catching up now to us. And it, there was some indication from the members of the fire association that, um, you may be also doing an, another review of, um, you know, increases, you know, in the next year, but it sounded like it would be early in the year, in 20, maybe in March or something like that of 2019. And so, I would just ask that, um, perhaps we be informed sooner of those issues as they arise. And so, I kind of, I felt bad that this was done so long ago and that, um, and that we're just, uh, getting, you know, our focus on it now. And, mind you, there are many issues that, you know, the city is dealing with, but I just want to be, you know, responsive, because you provide, the fire, uh, department provides such an essential service to our residents, and you're so important, and I want to make sure that you feel that you're appreciated and that we're not being neglectful of, um, dealing with issues as they're asking for them. And so, I would just ask that, um, if recommendations are made in the spring, that we take it into consideration, um, perhaps in the summer, you know, just so it's a little more timely. So, that was it.
I think one of the things that happened is, uh, when people wanted to talk about the Fire Relief Association and its role, that there was a lot of questions about that.
Right.
And so, finally, we had that opportunity to have that workshop, to help people understand the process and the role, so when we get a request like this, there's better understanding of it. And I think that was one of the reasons why it was, uh, delayed a little bit.
Right, yeah, it was big learning curve, yeah.
Right, exactly.
Yeah.
Councilmember Foltz.
I, I want to update, though, as the Chair of the Finance Committee. We did discuss this, because there is, is, Julie flattened mention here, there's not a budget issue this year, because the funding has the proper percentage balance in it. But this is also part of the Finance Committee work to get our budget prepared, because if it does drop below a percentage, the city finances on the hook for, um, offsetting that. Granted, it's only happened, I think, a few times, but, um, that's the reason why the Fire Relief may re- may approve this in the spring, but it, it was part of our budget cycle that we be prepared for this, because we may have to put a line item in our budget if we have some predictions that we may have to offset some costs here. That's the reason why it waits till the budget cycle, which we're in tonight with the Truth and Taxation. So, that's kind of some history of that, of why it waits this long, but also, I understand the Fire Relief, they usually vote on their stuff in the first part of the spring.
Is that a motion, council member?
Sure, that's a motion to approve.
Councilmember Vaughn makes a motion, uh, to approve. Is there a second to that motion? Seconded by Councilmember Lund. The motion is now before the body. Further discussion? Councilmember Balsanik.
Uh, thank you, Your Honor. What impact does this have on a, uh, one of our firefighters who would want to retire? Say if the board, if the Fire Relief Association Board approved something back in April or earlier, uh, and, and if the council were going to have to wait until we approve the budget in December, which is what we ordinarily do, normally do, what we're required to do? What is the impact of someone who is going to retire between now and earlier this year? I, I know our city administrator is sick this evening. Uh, I'm not sure if anyone can, can, uh, uh, can talk about that. Al, maybe you can. Thank you, Your Honor.
My name's Al Starley. I'm the President of the Relief Association, and in February, we have our annual meeting, the first week in February, and it's been that way for 60, 80 years. I don't know how long the relief has been in existence, but what happens is the memberships, if our, if our fund does good the year before, if we have a surplus, the membership will vote to have an increase. And council asked us last year that if we would come back with smaller increases more frequently. Sometimes we'd come for an increase every three, four, or five years. I know the one we had last year was a big one, but we didn't have any increase for, I think, four years prior to that. So, the council asked if we would come back with smaller increases more frequently. In the case of somebody that wants to retire after the vote in February, that increase does not take effect until council approves a increase. So, they either retire before council makes the, um, agreement to go with the increase, or they hang on until the increase, and then they retire after that.
There, there could be nothing that could be retroactive?
No.
All right.
Okay, further discussion? We have a motion before the body. Seeing none, all those in favor of that motion say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed nay. The motion prevails.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next, uh, city council, we have before us the, uh, accept the resignation of city administrator, Meli Mescola Lee, and, uh, and consider the process of recruitment. We have it in our packet. It's, the process is basically what I had indicated at the last meeting, um, that we'd ask the Administrative Committee to meet fairly soon here, that the Administrative Committee, uh, go through, uh, uh, several decisions. One, uh, first of all, go through the job description of the city administrator, take a look at the job description, and come together with a, an updated job description, if one wants to say it that way. Uh, two, to look into the possibility of a firm to put out a, you know, to, to examine a RFP process, a request for proposals, um, and put that document... process or request for proposals, and put that document together and begin that process. And then third, to have the Administrative Committee have a discussion and recommendation to city council while interim city administrator until the position is filled. I think that is a good way to go, and I'll leave it at that and open up the council Councilmember Balsanik?
Thank you, your honor. In looking at this conceptual timeline, this is fairly standard operating procedure for positions like this, and I see no reason to vary from that at all, so I'm very much in favor of this timeline.
Is that a motion?
Therefore, I will make a motion that we accept this conceptual timeline.
Councilmember Balsanik makes a motion to accept the resignation of city administrator Melanie Mescola Lee and to refer the matter as indicated to the Administrative Committee, seconded by Councilmember Foltz. Thank you. And discussion, councilmember?
Yes, your honor. I was on the League of Minnesota Cities website, and I found a really nice memo that highlights... It's specifically on this issue, on what to do when your city administrator leaves, and it's meant for unelected officials, and I thought it was a really good read, and so I will pass that to everybody, because I thought it was good background information.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Further discussion. Councilmember Liefeld?
Thank you, your honor. Okay. So in looking at the dates, we've got 20 business days, I think, before... To January 4th, okay? So we've got 20 business days and one council meeting coming up in between there, and that'll be December 17th. So if I look at the timeline talked about here, so mid to late December, the committee's going to meet, administrative committee's going to meet, talk about the points that we discussed previously that are mapped out here. Late December to early Janu... January, being cognizant of holidays, finalize it in a public meeting. At which point then, because if early to mid-January, we're going to appoint an interim, review the proposals, so at what point will we be voting, or will it be coming to council to vote for the interim city administrator? I guess I'm seeing a step missing here?
I'm anticipating that would happen at the January 7th meeting.
Okay. So that step's not listed in here, but that will be coming before council?
You know, that... And I'm only suggesting that'll be... The Administrative Committee will be discussing that. They'll probably be discussing the timing of it.
Okay.
But I would anticipate that the Administrative Committee may want to have a recommendation at that time.
Okay. Clarification question then, your honor, just to verify, that between the late December and early January, to the next meeting or the next bullet point of early to mid-January, there will be a meeting of council in which it will be voted based on the recommendation of the Administrative Committee as to who we will be appointing interim?
It may be on January 7th.
Again, I just want a clarification that states that is a vote by council to put an interim person?
The council as a whole will be voting for the interim city administrator at no matter what time that will be.
Thank you. I'm just not seeing that step, so I just wanted a clarification, your honor. Thank you so much.
Okay. Yeah, that'll be a step taken by the full council. That will not be an administrative committee's sole function. Good question, good clarification. We have a motion? We have a motion before the body? Is there any further discussion to the motion? Councilmember Lund?
Thank you, your honor. I mean, it's a tight timeline. It's a good guideline, right? We'll be, you know, specific dates will be figured out as we move along, and, you know, being on the Administrative Committee along with two others on this council, you know, we're not going to drag our feet, we're not going to rush, right? So we'll come up with a good plan and...
Timing's a guideline.
Exactly. So I just want to, you know, be clear with my intentions, and I think everybody's intentions, it's going to be a group decision, and you can't control the candidates and the quality of candidates, so if we need to wait, then we wait, if, you know, whatever. But I'm not going to hold anything back from getting a process in place as soon as possible, holidays or no holidays, so then I think, you know, we'll be able to do what we need to do on our part to speed things along. But once that's been established, I mean, whether it's March or April or whatever, you know, like, that's up to what we see coming through to us, so.
The Chair of the Administrative Committee, Councilmember Barax?
Thank you, Mayor. I think, I'm not sure what the underlying issue or question is there, but I think that what I want to say is that we are going to have a transition in leadership. We are going to have a mayor, new mayor, who's in the room with us, and we need to give a lot of respect and deference and room in the process for that transition, because we're going to have other thoughts and opinions in the room that we don't currently have. And so I think the generality of the process is not to be a vacuum for someone to make a unilateral decision. It is there because we have a transition coming, and we want to allow for additional input from our incoming leader, so that we have a process that is consistent with her vision for the city and is allowing for input from somebody in the room who isn't currently here. So if I had to interpret the vagueness in the timeline, I guess that's how I would interpret it, is we're trying to leave room in the process for potential shifts or additional input from our mayor-elect. That is the respect and the deference that I want to give, and I think that's the mayor's and Mayor Hicks's intent as well. So we will undertake the process, and it might not be exactly along these timelines, but I think we're open and flexible, and we want to do... We all want to do the right thing. So that's the goal of the Administrative Committee, and that's, I believe, the goal of this document and the drafted timeline as it stands. Thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Liefeld?
Thank you, your honor. I do want to speak to what Councilmember Barax's questions have the underlying question or concern here. This is two meetings in a row where I brought up this topic with some very basic questions. There is no underlying issue. Here's what I'm looking for, what I didn't say last month. I need to be assured that there is not any one, two, three, four individuals who can make a decision without it going before council. That was my question last month. That was my question today, because since it's not in the timeline, I get it. We can't control the timeline. I don't expect that this is going to happen quick. That's never been my concern. I've never suggested we rush this. I have had my question asked and been mildly insulted by the responses that I've got from council wanting to know why I'm in a hurry. I am not in a hurry on this topic, but it is concerning. We are losing two very valid and important members of our staff. So as long as we are being told what you have told me last time, your honor, and what you've told me this time so eloquently as always, there is not going to be a vacuum, as Councilmember Barax puts it, to make a unilateral decision. That was my concern. Thank you, your honor.
This is a significant issue, obviously, and we want to give deference to the mayor-elect involved in the process. And a question of this magnitude does deserve full council participation, no matter where we are in the process, once the Administrative Committee brings some guidance to it. And so there will always be, whenever it comes out of the Administrative Committee, will be a vote to council, whether it's the RFP process, whether it's the interim administrator, or, you know, the selection of a firm. All right. We do have a motion before the body. Is there any further discussion to the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor of that motion say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed nay, the motion prevails. Next, we have Councilmember Foltz make a request on where the status is right now with our water analysis, that we know that we put you, Nick, in charge of maybe a month and a half ago or so, a month ago. Welcome to the meeting again, and please give us an update.
Thanks, Mayor Hicks. You're right, we began work on our feasibility study of permanent disinfection methods for the water system in early November, and since that time, our consultant, Stan Tech's been working on accumulating a lot of data about our details of what we have in place for wells and facilities, and looking at how we would integrate systems at those locations, along with cost information and compiling that. And they've got a preliminary draft on my desk right now that we're just starting to review as staff. They still had a little bit more work to put into it, so they gave us a preview in essence, and so I've been starting to take a look at that as of this morning. We expect the more polished final version of that closer to the middle of the month, and then we'll reflect upon that. I'd anticipate that we'd be looking to bring that to a council workshop in January, just due to schedules of meetings and so forth. So that's what I can say at this point, and I certainly can stand for questions.
Thank you. Councilmember Foltz?
Yes. Thank you, Nick. I appreciate that. I've been really surprised as to the number of phone calls and emails that I've received recently, and there's a reoccurring theme, which I completely agree with, and it's been interesting the last few weeks, there's been kind of ebbs and flows with the taste of the water, particularly like right after Thanksgiving, it seemed like the water had a much stronger taste to it, you know, like I, of course, cooked, and then I was, you know, washing dishes, a whole bunch of them, and afterwards I thought, oh, I'm going to take a, you know, a cold glass of water, the pipes have been flushed, and I couldn't drink the water, I had to spit it out. And I think a lot of folks had that same exact experience, and so I know folks are trying to be patient about it, but when people are asking, you know, us, can you just stop the chlorination, or, you know, can we just go back? You know, it's concerning, and I think there's a lot of folks... I mean, we're spoiled because we've had really good tasting water all of these years, and then, you know, suddenly to have this interruption, you know, it's a major life interruption, when you don't feel comfortable drinking the water, and like, you know, personally, I went out and bought a Brita pitcher, you know, because my youngest child refuses to drink the water out of the tap, and, you know, and I don't believe in plastic bottled water having that readily available to them. And so like, how do we find these, you know, means of filtering our water so that it's, you know, digestible into our palates? And so I think whatever we can do to, you know, push information out to the residents so that they know just what you had said, you know, that we're communicating, so if Lee could, you know, maybe do one of her really awesome, you know, three... Was it three, three and three? Her little videos to give, you know, an update and push that out on Facebook, because everyone is really concerned about it, and they would just like to know where we are in, you know, the analysis, and so that they have hope that it's going to be... Is being addressed and that it'll get better instead of... Because it kind of got worse there for a while, and like I said, like, day by day, I'm not sure what to anticipate when I go to get a drink of water at this point. And I know it's nobody's fault, and I know that you've given really explanations of good explanations in the past about it, how it's because we haven't had chlorination in our water pipes before, and it's a biological, chemical reaction, and that's what we're tasting, and it'll go away eventually, but I just think that we need to be more proactive in letting folks know where we are in the process and to really, you know, beg for their patience, you know, in the process. And so I guess that's really what I wanted to share, because I don't think I'm the only council member that's receiving that feedback, so.
Yeah. We were... We've also seen some ebb and flow in the calls that we've received at Public Works, and I know Lee has as well, and we were talking about that, in fact, earlier today. A few came in in the last several days, emails as well. We've done checking to make sure that the rates that we have, the chlorination right now going at are consistent with what we expect, and they are. I know that there can be some variability across the system day to day on flow patterns and things as to where you might see some concentrations build up and maybe have that experience, and it wouldn't be identical each and every day. But yeah, we certainly understand it's a source of frustration for some folks. I do want to make a plug for the fact that we have put together a very thorough FAQ on the city's website. We'll reiterate that again with another Facebook post here in the near future, and I'll talk with Lee about refreshing the topic in the upcoming City Three video.
That would be terrific. And it would also be wonderful if you put a little information about the city budget in there, too. I thought that would be a cool, kind of fun thing, way to share information about our city budget. But anyhow, it's my own two cents, so, thanks.
All right. You're welcome.
Okay. Next, comments from the audience. Any comments from the audience this evening? Any comments from the audience? Seeing none announcements, council? Any announcements? Announcements? Councilmember Balsanik?
Thank you, your honor. Much to my disappointment, the Dakota Communications Center 911 Center quarterly meeting has been canceled.
Well, that's not right.
Well, I know. I can't say Merry Christmas and Happy New Year to all of the staff members there, but perhaps I'll send a very gracious email to everyone.
Excellent. Okay. Any other announcements? Councilmember Foltz?
Your honor, I don't have an announcement per se, but more of a council concern, and it was just in regards to the Hastings Community TV website. That has always been the way that I've reviewed our council meetings after our meetings, you know, just in case, like, I was daydreaming during, you know, presentation, I wanted to go back and really, you know, make sure I understood everything. And what I realized, I noticed several months ago, but I thought maybe it would self-correct, is that the Hastings Community TV website, the actual website, hasn't been updated in quite some... English, in quite some time. The last city council meeting that it's actually available for viewing is on August 20th, and so it hasn't... So if there's some kind of glitch in the website right now, I was wondering if there could be... If we could recommend like a placeholder be placed there so folks know how to access our council meetings and be able to view them? And I also noticed that you can't see them on like Comcast on the... Like, if you scroll the menu, you can't see when our meetings are playing. It just... Now it just says continually like public government programming or something really general. And so I just think it would be nice if folks knew how to tune into our council meetings. And I did ask one of the staff the other day about that, and he said, well, you know, you can always watch it through our YouTube channel, through Facebook, and, you know, I'm only 47 years old, but even to me, like, YouTube channels are a little like, what? And so just to make sure that all of our residents are fully under, you know, aware about how to access that, because I don't think that everyone's on Facebook or everyone understands what a YouTube channel is, so.
I'll be meeting with Tom Wright later this week, and I'll bring that to his attention.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Okay. Councilmember Lund?
On that, your honor.
Please.
I'm not the expert here, but I think the programming detail is actually something that is on its way, I believe.
I think so, because it's all tied into what's going on downstairs. And they're going to change the meetings to channel 15 instead of 16 or 14. One of the changes, and they're going to explain that more once they get the downstairs renovation done. But I'll talk to Tom Wright, too, about some of the other issues. I've been watching replays, because I need to refresh my memory on YouTube, but I understand that everybody can navigate that, so. That's certainly a point I'll take.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Okay. Is there any other announcements? Okay. I have a few announcements, council. At 7:00 PM, oh, excuse me, December... Monday, December 10th at 5:45, there'll be a joint meeting with School District 200 and the Hastings Area Chamber of Commerce to discuss a joint marketing project. Attending for the city's behalf will be the city's Hedra Tourism Representatives, Councilmembers Balsanik, Lund, and Vaughn, and that'll be on Monday, December 10th at 5:45.
Where is that being held?
Is that at City Hall?
That's at Align Hall.
At the New Hastings Clinic. Top of the room at the Align Clinic. Okay. Thank you for that clarification, trustee. 7:00 PM that same evening, the Planning Commission will be meeting. On Tuesday, December 11th at 7:00 PM, the Parks and Recreation Commission will be meeting. Wednesday, December 12th from 5:00 to 7:00, there's a reception for Mayor Hicks. I don't know who that guy is, but he's having a reception. So there'll be a reception at City Hall here, I believe, in this room, so. It's kind of weird to say it in your own party, but...
I could have made that noise.
So the reception at City Hall on December 12th from 5:00 to 7:00, it's kind of a farewell reception. On Thursday, December 13th at 6:00 PM, Hedra will be meeting at City Hall, and on Monday, December 17th at 7:00 PM is our next city council meeting. So council, we have no further business before our body. A motion to adjourn is in order.
Your honor. I'm sorry.
Oh. Councilmember Liefeld?
Sorry. You... I was hoping that was on your calendar, so I was going to wait.
Oh, please.
Tuesday, December 11th and Thursday, December 13th, from 4:00 to 7:00 PM at the Calvary Christian Church, our Public Works Department will be having a community meeting in regards to our... You're looking at me like I'm incorrect?
Right.
Okay.
I'm reading better.
Okay. Thank you. You're looking at me like I might be wrong, that we are going to be having our 2019 street improvements for the community members of Ward Three that are going to be impacted by these street improvements. So please... So please, neighbors, this is how you get your answers and how you get your input. So Calvary Christian Church, two different nights, Tuesday and Thursday, December eleventh and thirteenth, from four to seven.
Excellent. Thank you for, thank you for bringing that forward.
Thank you.
Okay, seeing that there's no other business before our body, a motion to adjourn is in order. Councilmember Balsanik makes that motion, seconded by Councilmember Barax. All those in favor of that motion say aye. Aye, those opposed, nay, the motion prevails and we are adjourned. Thank you.